Good evening and welcome to the May 2, 2024 Northampton County Council Meeting. Mr. Gafredo, will you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please pause for a moment of silence? Thank you. Ms. Chefnisky, will you call the roll, please? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Korpora?
Here.
Mr. Giovanni? Mr. Gafredo?
Here.
Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Ms. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Oh, boy. We have all present except Mr. Giovanni, but we have Heckman and Brown on the phone. Thank you. Could I please have a motion to approve the minutes of April 18, 2024?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Courtesy of the floor. There are several people that have signed up this evening for courtesy of the floor. Please, when you come to the podium, state your name and the city where you reside, and you have five minutes to speak. First, I have Mike Brett from the Redevelopment Authority of Easton.
I may get here for later. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Russ Settler?
Sutton?
Sutton? You're up.
Thank you. My name is Russell Sutton. I reside at 2133 Salkin Avenue in Lower Salkin Township, and more specific, Steel City. I'd like to address you to things have changed in our township and also an upcoming court hearing that's coming up. As many as you know, on election night, November 7, 2023, there was an upset concerning Lower Salkin Township. Many people crossed party lines. One of the issues that brought this change about was a demand that the current council, that no one other than township residents or township taxpayers were allowed to speak. Then, a three-minute time limit was imposed. At the regular resource meeting of the January 2, that policy was changed. One of more topics at recent council meetings have been the Bethel landfill on Applewater Road down owned by Waste Management and headquarters in Texas. The collision of the communities and associations in our area continue to fight against the proposed destruction of 275 acres of forest to expand the landfill. Several lawsuits have been filed, and your continuing support is appreciated. And the changes made, the public comments policy will allow our neighbors to participate more fully at our township meetings. Before, it was only limited to citizens and people that paid taxes in the township, so now anyone can come, and you have a five-minute limit. Our neighboring communities are now allowed to express their concerns. The time was revised to five minutes. The public comment on the agenda will be allowed after each item was presented by council following public comment. If a motion is made seconded by a councilman, they will vote on the item. It is hoped this policy will encourage citizens of Lower Salkin Township and neighboring communities to engage in the political process. Please disseminate this information through your respective communities. And I'm a member of Citizens for Responsible Development in Lower Salkin Township, and I'm also a part of the Environmental Advisory Committee. On June 13, we're going to have a court hearing in Northampton County, and the residents and the allies are trying to defend efforts to restore and enforce the scenic and conservation easements prohibiting landfill expansion. These have been in place since 1964. On June 13, 2024, Northampton County Judge Adrian Cassius will conduct a hearing on a lawsuit to restore and enforce the scenic and conservation easements that Lower Salkin Township terminated and allowed the expansion of the Bethel landfill. Brief history lesson is helpful here. Readers may recall that the scenic and conservation easements protected the land on which the Bethel landfill wanted to expand. These easements obligated the landfill and the township to preserve the original character and scenic nature of the land. Landfill operations were expressly prohibited. To allow this expansion, the township not only had to change its zoning ordinance, but also had to get rid of the scenic and conservation easements. It's a betrayal of our community at the township, and the council majority did so. Like I said, there's been a change on our majority. In response to the township's termination of these easements, Lower Salkin Township residents and their allies, St. Luke's Hospital, Bethel Township, and the Delaware Lehigh National Heritage Corridor sued Bethel Landfill Company and Lower Salkin Township. The declaratory judgment case seeks a court order to uphold and enforce the scenic and conservation easements and ordering the township to reverse its rezoning and not allow the expansion. So basically, we have four cases other than the one on the 13th. We would encourage you, if you have respect for our environment and want to preserve our watersheds, our quality of our air, and our water, to come to the hearing on June 13, right here in Northampton. So I just wanted to make you aware of this information, and we really appreciate your help if you can. We only have one environment. Once it's gone, it's gone. And I know for a fact, behind my house, they tore down over 100 acres of timber selective forestry, which it wasn't. They stripped it, and I could never see the ridge line above my house. Now I can see it, clear as day. And they really, the walls are really easy to bend and move, and I tried to object, but they still did it anyway. But this is a major issue for us, for an environmental issue, and also, I mean, we have a beautiful area here. We want to keep it. We want to keep it natural and scenic, and we don't want to be destroyed by pollution, and we want to be able to breathe clean air, clean water, and protect the land. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Dennis Henrichs.
Good evening, council. How are you all tonight? My name is Dennis Henrichs. I live at 4154 Rush Road, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, 18020. I want to bring it up about the health facility we're going to be going through tonight. I'm the president of Ask Me Local 1265. We are the biggest union in Northampton County, in the area. We are in District Council 88, with Tom Totsi as our director. Tom is also International Vice President, and he is being selected this year with the AFL-CIO in conjunction with us as Union Man of the Year. Okay? My staff representative is Denise Luna. I'm writing this letter to county council on behalf of Local 1265 and my members. My sisters and brothers of Ask Me 1265, we're in full support of the Partner Healthcare System. We were up here last year. That is being proposed by our county executive and his administration. As you all know, the cost of healthcare has been rising throughout the country, especially with prescription drug and co-pays with no end in sight. In addition, in addition to the cost, the difficulty of trying to make an appointment with your primary care physician when you're not feeling well is a very daunting task. Okay? I know appointments are sometimes six months out, when you make a regular doctor's appointment. This administration has secured a very good health plan for us. We have not had a rise in our healthcare plan in six years through our bargaining rates. So that's a credit to county council, and it's a credit to the administration that we do. With the addition of the Teladoc and the CanRx program, I know I benefit from the CanRx program, and my wife does. I take one pill, and she takes a different pill, and it costs us, and it saves us $684, $864 a year. That's what it saves us in medication. And we got that with the collecting, with through the administration. With this in mind, introducing a partnership health plan would enhance our health program. Not only would it benefit our sisters and brothers in the union, but all county employees. Reduce the co-pays, sometimes which they cannot meet, because sometimes people live paycheck to paycheck, and it's hard for them to get things done. Being able to go to a facility that is strictly for county employees and not the general public would be a great increase. One, it's going to cut down on our sick time. Two, it's going to ease the load of our coworkers when they are out on sick. And three, our coworkers will benefit from that also. This is just some of the reason that we at Ask Me Local 1265 are backing this health plan 100%. This is my second time presenting this, and I hope we are all on board with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor at this time? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. McClure, do you have a report?
Good evening, council. So nice to be here with you tonight again. I have an elections report. We had a successful and uneventful primary election on Tuesday, April 23. There were no machine issues, and in-person turnout was very light across the county. The Election Commission signed and certified the unofficial results on April 30 after the canvas. An Election Commission meeting will be held next week on Tuesday, May 7, at 3:00 p.m. in the third-floor training room. The commission will certify the official results at this meeting. The Elections Division will be holding a casting of lots for ties to determine the winner in a number of races across the county for the Republican County Committee members. This will occur at 12:00 noon on Friday, May 10, in council chambers, and will also be livestreamed on the county's YouTube channel. Republican committee seats are the only races with ties. There are 16 districts with 55 total candidates that will be decided. The full unofficial results can be found on the Elections Division's portion of the county website, but some key numbers are: There were 49,473 ballots cast. There were 28,787 in-person votes cast. There were 20,563 absentee mail-in ballots cast, and there were 123 provisional ballots. Today, I had the honor of attending at 10:30 in the morning the Board of Commissioners meeting in Carbon County. They meet at 10:30 in the morning to sign a memorandum of understanding to have intergovernmental cooperation with Carbon County. We will be providing them with technical assistance, no money. We will not be giving them any money, but we will be providing them with technical assistance as they develop their farmland preservation program and their open space and environmentally sensitive program. They recently passed a referendum, and they've raised about $10,000 through, I believe they probably instituted a EIT or something akin to that, and they've got 10, they're sitting on $10 million. They aren't quite sure how to get it out, and we're going to provide them with technical assistance from our farmland preservation division and from our open space advisory folks. That will help them immensely. Our self-interest is, in part, the Lehigh River has been determined to be one of the 10 most endangered rivers in the country, and one of the reasons cited for the Lehigh River being one of the 10 most endangered rivers is the runoff from the warehouse proliferation. Further, we are battling warehouse proliferation in Northampton County, and we're demonstrating some success now, and I suspect they'll look up the river for other locations to cite their million-square-foot warehouses. So that's why we entered into that memorandum of understanding, and we're really pleased to be able to do that. With that said, we have 255 farms in preservation here in Northampton County totaling 19,278.96 acres, and we closed another one on Friday. So we're rocking and rolling in our farmland and open space preservation here. Council, in the very near future, you're going to be seeing an RFP with respect to the collections of fees, fines, costs, and restitution. Northampton County is currently owed $96,522,038.71 in fees, fines, costs, and restitution. Let me repeat that. Now, most of this money will never be collected. That's just a fact of life. However, this is what I want to focus on. There are victims of crime, victims of crime in this county who are owed $43,502,71.97. Restitution. Restitution. That means whatever crime was committed against them, that the person was convicted of committing against that crime victim, they are owed in total $43.5 million. So we're going to go about collecting that, because crime victims should not go uncompensated. Wanted to give you a little update on Fake is Real, because as you know, it's not just billboards. It's a true campaign to save lives in Northampton County. And our Narcan trainings are 44. We've done 44 Narcan trainings across this county. We've had 121 requests through our Fake is Real website. Our folks have done 88 events. They've done 22 forensic demonstrations. They've done 100 folks at the DHS. They've done 107 folks here at the courthouse, 41 at domestic relations, 14 at criminal administration, 35 in the prison, 21 at the Palmer Recovery Center, nine at the Hope Recovery Center, 30 at the Juvenile Justice Center, 31 on clean slate. Northampton County is safer because of the work our drug and alcohol folks are doing under the Fake is Real banner, with the Fake is Real funding from the money we have recovered from suing opioid manufacturers. No tax money is going into this at all. Earlier, I was watching earlier, Commissioner, you had a question about affordable housing. And I know the Planning Commission is going to do something with the Fed sometime later next year, but in 2021, we did an assessment, and I just want to share with you some of the things we found. And I think this is relevant, because in the TIFF document, that ordinance that slated to be introduced tonight, there's $1.1 million of money for Northampton County's affordable housing goals. And I wouldn't do this deal without that money. I want to be very clear about this. We need that money for our own affordable housing projects. And here's what we found in 2020. This is just a synopsis, which I can share with, because councils had this before, but obviously before you got here. So we're going to share this with you. Again, we did this in spring 2021. Not enough rental units affordable for low- and moderate-income households. The greatest rental housing need is for units priced below $800 per month for one-bedroom and below $1,000 per month for two-bedroom unit. Limited housing options even in emerging job centers, Route 33 corridor, for example. Lots of jobs in that corridor. Even though the supply of moderately-priced rental units is shrinking and the need is dire, it is difficult to build more units due to land costs, construction costs, zoning restrictions, limited interest from developers, and opposition from community members. Seniors and other fixed-income residents struggle to remain in homes. Senior homeowners earning below 50% of the AMI are much more likely to experience housing challenges than the state average, 75% compared to 43%. Common challenges include the cost of utilities, basic maintenance and repairs, and property taxes. Black and Latino households are experiencing housing challenges at a higher rate than white and Asian households. Homeownership rate for black and Latino households is 44% and 54% respectively, compared to 81% for white households. And the thing that I think just screams out for this 1.1 million in this ordinance that we're going to collect, homelessness remains an issue, families with children in particular. And again, this was in 2021. In the 2019-2020 school year, there were more than 600 children enrolled in schools in Northampton County who are homeless. So clearly, we have a housing crisis, and it's up and down the economic ladder. We need housing for everybody. Yes, sir.
Do you think that number could have trended in a better direction since the pandemic since 2021?
My best knowledge to that is no, it has not, unfortunately. Oh, sure. And finally, I feel compelled to report something very strange that just happened a little earlier this evening to council, because, I mean, I don't play this way, so I would like to know what happened. After the Human Services meeting, Ms. Zembos said that she had a few letters that she had to hand out at the conclusion of my report, very specific. The conclusion of my executive report, letters were to be handed to me and Ms. Wanda Lousky and some other people, but Sue didn't hear who the other people were, so I sent her back. I said, you know, we live in a time where we just don't just open envelopes from people, you know, that we don't know the, we don't know where they came from. So Sue went back, talked to Linda again, and Linda said that she no longer had to give these envelopes to us. And we asked Linda, well, where are they coming from? And Linda would not reveal that, then that's her prerogative. She doesn't have to tell us where these were coming from or who was asking her to do it. But this cloak-and-dagger stuff is very unusual. It's not the way I play, and I don't know who in council is trying to pass us envelopes. I guess they were meant for myself, Sue Wanda Lousky, Nicole Petersak, Steve Barron, and Mary Lou Cabali. So I have a question. Who's trying to pass us envelopes?
That would be...
What? Okay. All right. Thank you.
I pulled them back.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That answers the mystery. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. McClure? Okay, moving on. I have one question, just a moment. Under Old Business, we have the public hearing of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Granting of a Permanent Easement to the City of Easton to Permit the Installation of Stormwater Improvements on a Portion of Lands Owned by the County of Northampton, as described in Deed Book Volume 2000-1, Page 035211, and Tax Parcel Number L9SE2D-20-2PKB." Mr. Kraft and Korpora introduced this ordinance at the April 18, 2024 meeting. Are there any questions or comments for the public regarding this matter? Is there any discussion from council? Call for the vote. Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft, I'm sorry, Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. Is there any other old business to discuss? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move into new business. First, we have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance by the Northampton County Council, Concurring and Agreeing with the Borough of Wilson and the Wilson Area School District to Participate in a Proposed Tax Increment Financing District, to be known as the 1921 at Dixie Avenue Tax Increment Financing District, in accordance with the powers conferred upon municipalities by the Act 113 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as amended." Would someone please sponsor this ordinance?
I'll sponsor it.
The public hearing will be held on this at June 6, 2024 meeting, and the debate and vote will be held at the Wednesday, July 3, 2024 meeting. Next, we have consideration of a resolution approving the substantial amendment to the fiscal years 2017, 2019, 2020, 2022, and 2023 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plans for the County of Northampton. Mr. Gafredo, will you introduce the resolution?
Whereas the County of Northampton is recipient of grant funds under the Community Development Block Grant Program administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and whereas the county has previously approved a budget and annual action plans for the fiscal years of 2017, 2019, 2020, 2022, and 2023 CDBG program, and whereas HUD permits grant recipients to revise and amend previous budgets and annual action plans, and whereas in accordance with the federal regulations governing CDBG program, certain changes and revisions to the annual action plan may be considered a substantial amendment as outlined in the County Citizen Participation Plan, canceling an approved activity or adding a new one, and whereas it has been determined that the proposed changes and revisions to fiscal years 2017, 19, 20, 22, and 23 CDBG program are a substantial amendment, and the County Citizen Participation Plan has been followed. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the County of Northampton that the substantial amendment for the fiscal year 2017, 19, 2020, 22, and 23 annual action plan is hereby approved, that the county executive and the Department of Community and Economic Development are authorized to execute and file the substantial amendment for the enclosed list of projects, and that the county executive is hereby authorized to provide assurances and/or certifications as required by HUD, and also provide any additional documents that may be requested.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this matter or discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Next, we have consideration of a resolution regarding the audiovisual upgrades to the county council meeting room. Mr. Gafredo, will you introduce this resolution?
Whereas on November 16, 2023, Northampton County Council adopted ordinances number 761-2023 entitled, "An Ordinance Directing the Purchase and Implementation Upgrades to the Audio and Visual Capabilities of the County Council Meeting Room," regarding upgrades to the county council meeting room after shortcomings were highlighted during the COVID-19 global pandemic. And whereas the county executive vetoed and returned the ordinance on November 27, 2023, and that veto was duly overridden on December 7, 2023 via Resolution Number 100-2023. And whereas on March 8, 2024, county council received a proposal, Exhibit 1, from the Blue Chip Sound, the vendor that has previously worked with the county's internal information technology contractor, Vision Technologies. And now therefore it is hereby resolved that as both the administration and Vision Technologies have agreed that the upgrade can be done in accordance with the original ordinance, Northampton County Council does hereby grant Blue Chip Sound approval to move forward with the proposal to upgrade the audiovisual capabilities of the county council meeting room.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding this matter? Call for the vote. Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Next, we have consideration of a Health Center Resolution. Mr. Warren, will you introduce this, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Before I introduce this or even proceed with this, I did not realize that we were not going to have a member present today. I did not realize that Mr. Giovanni was not going to be here. I know he is in a better place right now than where we're at. However, as much as I do want to introduce this resolution tonight, vote on it for our employees, inevitably for taxpayers here in this county, I am wondering if we can potentially move this to our next meeting or when we have a full slate of members here. This is too important, I believe, given the discussions we've had. Oh, okay.
So you need to introduce it, and then we can vote to table it, and then we can move it and bring it back. I don't think we could just say, unless you want, can you withdraw it?
You can withdraw, and you can bring it back. If I may. Yes.
I'm just asking procedure. I have no problem with what you're trying to do. I just want to do it correctly.
I'm sure Commissioner Warren will remember this. We talked very briefly on the phone that we reviewed the Home Rule Charter, that at any meeting, any member can bring a resolution.
Absolutely.
At 604, I just looked at it.
Yes, absolutely. Again, my hesitation here is an initiative this large for the county. I believe... I believe that all nine members should be here to vote on it. I do not, and like I said during our last meeting, nobody knows how everybody's going to vote. Nobody knows at this point. And I think, especially because Mr. Giovanni was on the committee that recommended integrity as well, who gave a fantastic presentation to us at our last meeting, or at the committee meeting, and I would like to table this from procedural standpoint, Mr. Spadoni. Yeah, would you like to withdraw? Do I just make a motion to withdraw?
You can do that.
Okay. I'll make the motion to withdraw.
Do I have a second? Do we have discussion on the motion? Call for the vote. Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss? Are there any county council committee reports?
I have one.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, so the Human Services Committee met today. We heard a presentation on the Children and Youth and Families Supervision Tool. It was a brief demonstration of the Decision Aid Tool and Supervision Tool for predictive analytics for more efficiency. We heard some placement percentages, some outcome percentages, and staffing, and position vacancies, and numbers.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports? Mr. Gafredo?
The Economic Development Committee meeting met before this meeting. LVPC came to give a bit more clarity on their 2023 Annual By-County Report, and presentation on the Dixie Cup Project was had, which I think we introduce here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? Any liaison reports? Everything's coming up next week, so. Council Clerk report?
None.
And council solicitor? For everybody that came out that looks like they're under the age of 18, I'm sorry that we didn't have a more juicy meeting, but if you come back in a couple weeks, it might be more exciting, but we'll still sign your papers. Now, that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Boo, go Knicks.
What is that?
Are you allowed to be shot here?
No.
Did we take a shot?